Board of Trustees meeting, January sixteenth, twenty twenty four, six thirty P M. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And Governor Healy's March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three revised order extending remote participation. By all members in a meeting with public body, this meeting of the Great Barrington Affordable Housing Trust will be conducted via remote. Participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public. And our parties with a right or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town website at W W W. Town of G B dot org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. See instructions at the top of the agenda. No in person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made. To ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Um, and we have, um, I'm just gonna go, uh, Bill Cook. Christina Crusia, uh, Ananda Tim Payne. And myself, Fred Clark are present. Joseph Method is joining us presently. He is here now. So those are the five members of the, um. Affordable Housing Trust. We, as usual, have a very large agenda and a very limited amount of time. So, um, we're gonna jump right in and see if we can get through it as quickly as we can. Um, we have several minutes to address. Uh, I would like to take them as a group if we could perhaps, um. All of the meetings for the regular meetings, I can go through the dates if you like. They're on the agenda. And then we'll do a separate vote for the subcommittee and for the select board joint meeting. Uh, are there any corrections, changes, additions to the minutes? If they get a chance to look at him, I know is a lot.
I found a couple of little typos, but nothing changed anything. So I would be willing to overlook those.
Send them to me and I'll fix them, whatever.
Okay.
So our motion to adopt the minutes will need to reflect that.
Okay, then I move to accept all of the minutes listed on the agenda for the housing trust. Um, with the couple of typo corrections that I can send Fred.
I think we do, the minutes for this meeting will need to reflect the dates of the minutes we're, we're accepting.
The minutes, so, uh, Bill, if you don't mind. Uh, the motion is, uh, I'll second the motion. The, if we can amend the motion to say the minutes reflecting March twenty first, April eighteenth. September twenty sixth, October fifth, October seventeenth, October twenty fourth. Uh, November twenty first, December sixth, and December nineteenth. Uh, is, is where the minutes that we're voting on at this point. I've been through them. I think they're, um, as good as they could get. So. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, can we vote? This is a roll call vote to accept those minutes. Uh, I'm just gonna go down as it's on my screen. Bill Cook, please.
Yes.
Christina. Uh, you're muted, please, just indicate. So that I'll take that as an I. Um, Ananda.
Hi.
And Joseph.
Um, abstain.
Abstain. Um. Thank you and thank you, uh, Shep for helping to get those in shape. Next, we have, I, I'll make a motion. To approve the minutes of previous subcommittee meetings held on May tenth and September. Fifth, which were distributed. Can I have a second, please?
A second.
Second. Any changes, comments?
Uh, I just have a, a comment, which is, I do think, uh, I appreciate the brevity and I think that the detail is captured by including the worksheets. And I do think going forward, um, we, even in, even accounting for brevity. It's important that we include the key points of the substance of discussion, not just the outcome.
Noted.
Thank you.
Uh, this is a motion to accept the minutes of May tenth and September. Uh, fifth, which were subcommittee meeting minutes. Uh, Bill Cook, please.
Uh, I have one more thing.
Yes, Bill Cook, one change.
That, uh, September fifth meeting was actually October fifth.
No, this is the subcommittee.
Right.
But, um.
Let me check the date because I did also have a question about that date and I thought I must have noted it wrong on my notes. Hang on.
Yeah, because there was one on October fifth, but I couldn't find anything on September fifth.
It was September twelfth. We, I think it had been, I think it was rescheduled. I think that's why there are two dates, but it was September twelfth.
It was, well, the meeting, there was a technical problem or there was some sort of a problem. Uh, we had to reschedule it for a week later, is my recollection.
So, um, can we amend the motion? To reflect that the date for, that is, the minutes for the, the. Meeting currently noted as September fifth should read September twelfth.
September fifth should be changed to September twelfth. Everything else is the same.
And that was, Bill, that was the only thing you caught.
Yes.
Great.
I'm just looking here. Um. There, I, I, I have a, an, uh. I'm on the, uh, public channel for the community television, Southern Berkshires, and they have a recording from October fifth. Here.
I believe that's not a subcommittee. That's our, that's our full meeting. And we just approved those minutes.
Yeah, we did have a full meeting on that day.
We did have a full meeting. Okay, fine. Um. Okay, we have a motion on the table to accept the, uh, meeting minutes of May tenth. And the September twelfth is the correct date?
Correct.
Yes.
Um, Bill Cook.
Yes.
Um, Christina.
Hi.
Ananda.
Hi.
Joseph.
Sorry, abstain.
And Fred Clark votes yes. The final one is the, um, joint meetings that we had with the Select Board Planning Housing Committee. On, um. Uh, October twenty fourth and December sixth. Um, because this was a joint meeting and because we were guests. We did not prepare the many minutes. They were prepared by the joint committee. We did not attend the entire meeting, but because it was posted on our. Homepage on the town, uh, it felt that these minutes should also be included on our homepage. I am going to suggest that instead of accepting these minutes. Or accept, I'm sorry, I, that we use the word accept instead of the word approve. I, I'm gonna suggest. That we accept these meeting minutes and post them on our, our town website.
A second.
Sure, second.
So these are the joint subcommittee meetings with the Select Board Planning Housing Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust. For, um, October twenty fourth and December sixth. Bill Cook.
Yes.
Christina is away.
Yes.
Yes, we got a guess from Christine. Uh, Ananda.
Yes.
Joseph.
I'm abstaining.
Staying, and Fred Clark votes yes. So thank you, everybody, for. That, we have some brief, um, news and then we're gonna get into the, Bill, the, the meeting here. Um, we have a couple of, um. News items on some of the projects that we've been involved in. Grove Street is complete. The, uh, Affordable Housing Trust, the family has moved in. That's the only news there. Uh, thank you for everybody to help out. Uh, North Plain Road. I'm sorry, let me just get this and then you can comment. North Plain Road, um, is moving forward. It is, looks like they may be able to bid the project and break ground this spring. So we're very happy with that. It's very, very hot. And Anna, did you have a comment?
I was just congratulating the family at Grove Street.
It's been a wonderful thing. Um, we also went before the C P A to request funds for our next fiscal year. And, um, I'm gonna give you a brief report now and then we, we have a, an agenda item to talk about it in more depth later. So if we could hold the discussion and comments until that later discussion. Um, basically, the C P A had, uh, almost two million dollars with their requests and about eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, to distribute and they did not vote for, they did not give funds to all of the. Project, projects were requested. I originally thought that they would try to fund more projects and with a, with a, reduce the level, but they decided not to do that. For affordable housing, they gave construct a hundred and ten thousand. They provided the C D C Thornwood with two hundred and fifty thousand. Marble Block, uh, was a hundred and fifty thousand. And at that point, they said, well, we'll give the Affordable Housing Trust whatever's left over. Which turned out to be a recommendation of twenty-three thousand dollars for next year. There were some other grants to the Historical Society and. The Mason Library steps. And I can't remember what else at this point, but there were another, many, many other projects that were passed over and were not funded. Um, so, uh, we'll talk about this more depth in a, in a, in a couple of minutes. The final item for news that I have is, um. Bill and Ananda appeared on Berkshire Argus with a podcast, uh, in late December. Uh, was broadcast on the twenty ninth. It's still available. If you haven't listened to it, it's really wonderful. They did a fantastic job of. Um, talking about the needs of affordable housing. Berkshire Argus is Bill Shine's new project that, um. Is looking at projects in more in depth and he had reached out to. Uh, our group looking for a couple of people who are available. So thank you very much for doing that. I think you guys did a wonderful job.
What's the exact name of that, uh, Bill Shine's project, Argus?
It's called Berkshire Argus, A R G U S.
O S, U S.
U S.
You, A.
A R G U S.
Great, thank you.
Um, any other news anybody wants to share quickly? Let's move right into old business then. Um. We, uh, have had way too much time spending talking about the C D C and. The, their R F P response and proposal for Thornwood. Uh, I'd like to see if we could. Vote on it one way or the other this evening so that we're, um. Uh, have a bit of closure on this. So, um. I'm gonna propose that we not spend a lot of time talking about this. I think we're all talked out on this. I'd like to just make a motion, um, and I'm gonna make it myself. The motion is to approve C D C's. Proposal for a hundred and, a grant for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for Thornwood. Um, subject to, uh, at least two, uh. A hundred percent A M I housing restrictions. That, that's, that's the proposal.
Oh, yeah, specify when you say when at least two restrictions, you, you mean like at least two units would be restricted?
Yes, um, I, I'll say two, um. Two restrictions, two units. Can I get a second and we can have some discussion?
Second.
Joseph seconded. I wanna make a statement and I see that C D C would like to make a statement. I'd rather they didn't, but I, I think in fairness, I have to allow them to, to talk a little bit. I'm gonna make my statement as a, as, as, as member of the committee and basically say, they received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. From C D C, uh, from, um, C P A to purchase this project. They. If they were to be awarded this, a grant from our group, it would also be C P A money. It would mean that they would have received four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from C P A. Which is the largest grant by fifty percent that C P A has ever given. The largest previous grant was three hundred thousand dollars. They would be getting four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars if we were there. What we need to recognize is that we're acting as agents of the C P A funds. We're spending C P A funds. The other thing I'll say is. It's never been the intention that public funds pay a hundred percent. For, uh, a project. The public funds point is to. Be an incentive to help people. Arrange other funding, to, to unlock other funding such as a mortgage, things like that. It's never, ever been the intention to have public funds. Uh, provide the whole thing. This is also a real estate. Option, uh, project, which means it's going to have rentals. It's gonna have cash flow. It's gonna have the ability to pay, uh, amortize a, a loan over time. So those are my three, three statements that I've been stewing about for, for a week. I'm gonna go through the committee first and then we'll let C D C speak and then we're gonna have a vote. Ananda, your hand was up first.
Uh, thank you, Fred. My comment is short. Um, I just wanna, I do think that for the record, it is important that while, um, we. We, the trust does have funds that are sourced from C P C to. To be clear that this would not be a C P, like a C P C grant, that the two bodies are different, even if our funding. Could be drawn out of our C P A funds. Um, and then I do wanna make sure that C D C has an opportunity to speak since we requested that they bring additional information to us.
Um, I recognize your comment. I disagree about the C P C funds. Joseph, your hand was up. Do you still have a comment?
Yeah, um. Yeah, I mean, I, I feel like they got two hundred and fifty thousand, um, and. Um. I don't, I mean, I, I, I feel like we already know how the vote's gonna go. So I'm not, I'm not too invested in having like a big conversation. I, I don't really follow the logic necessarily of. Um, I don't really follow the logic necessarily of like. It's too much money to put into a project because let's say there was like a hypothetical multifamily building. That could benefit a ton of people. I don't think there would be any cap on the amount of money that we could give them. I think it, I think it, it's strictly dictated by the number of affordable units you're creating. So I, I, I just thought, I don't think we need to overthink it too much. The leveraging is weird because if, cause if you say, like, if they go and get. You know, state money or, or non, other nonprofit money, that's great. Where it's like some other actor that wants to create affordable units. But just saying like, they can go get the money and, and do a mortgage. Well, their incentive is to do market rate on, on all the other units. So it's just, I mean, it, I, just as a matter of principle, just to sort of state my, my perspective, I, I don't. I don't think there's anything that says we can't. You know, if someone had eight, eight awesome affordable units and we could get each one for seventy-five thousand or fifty thousand. That we wouldn't wanna like just go all, put all our chips in there. That's all.
Bill, Bill or Christina, do you, either of you have a comment?
No, thank you. When, when you're talking about, um, two units of affordable housing, is that permanently affordable are we asking for?
Yes.
And they're asking a hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Yes.
Because we just. Gave a hundred and fifty thousand for two units for fifteen years.
No, those are very different units. Those are actual apartments to.
Right, right.
People can live.
It, it seems like a lot for this sort of transitional housing to me.
Hmm. Uh, Ananda, you have an additional comment?
Just a point of clarification, um, according to the December, um. Sources and expenses sheet provided to us by Chris, which shows the Front Street Grant awarded. Um, we do not have. A hundred and seventy-five thousand unencumbered in C P A funds. We would have to dip into, into the funds, um, the general purpose funds from the town line item.
Well, I think we should do that because the C P A funds is strictly for the trust to purchase property. Not for us to give to someone to purchase property. We should save the C P A funds for our own purposes to purchase property, I would think.
We haven't budgeted to purchase property this year. I mean, I, like, your process point stands and from the budget discussions we've had so far, that is, we have not prioritized that this year.
I, I, I mean, I could talk all night on this, but I'd rather get to, to some other stuff. Are there any other comments from the committee?
Nope.
All right, um. I'm gonna recognize the, the C D C here and allow them to talk. Um, please go ahead. Please be brief.
Yes, thank you. This is Phil Orenstein. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for, uh, considering your application to circle back briefly on a few of this committee's previous questions. Uh, we have proposed that a specified number of rooms, that is ten. At Thornwood be deed restricted as capped at affordable to a hundred percent A M I or below. Our view is the housing option provided by the Thornwood. Rooms with a private bath and shared kitchen and dining space are eligible for Affordable Housing Trust grants. That being said, it is clear that this committee has the authority to approve or reject our application. The funds required for this project are significant and as a result, we are pursuing all options available, both public and private sources. Describing these efforts as quote unquote double dipping is inaccurate and unnecessarily critical. There have been comments suggesting that we are seeking to buy the property debt free. This is inaccurate. We will have a significant mortgage on the property equal to eighty percent of the purchase price. Requested funds will be used for either a down payment assistance or to maintain our monthly room rates as low as possible. And to conclude, the C D C S B is a five oh one C three nonprofit entity and the Thornwood Inn will operate in a similar manner. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Uh, you said ten units are deed restricted. You're willing to enter into the debt?
Yes, that's we, that's what we have proposed, yes.
Okay, I'd like to, uh, alter my motion then, instead of two units of deed restricted, uh, to change it to ten units of deed restricted. I did, and whoever seconded it, that was, uh.
I didn't.
Joseph, we, we accept that?
Sure.
Alteration?
Yes.
Yeah, and just to, I'm sorry to clarify, am I still on audio?
Yeah, yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, the deed restriction would be for the term of the mortgage, which was fifteen years.
No, that's not what our proposal is.
Well, that's what we're proposing to you, but, uh, you could, you could reject it, obviously.
Good, can I ask a question?
Yeah, Ananda has the floor.
Um, we, at the end of last, our last meeting's discussion on this topic, um. You all had said you would provide us with, um, an, with an updated. Uh, budget that showed your full set of funding sources as the one we had just showed. Your, um. Mortgage and equity, like the funding sources you were putting in and the request to this, to the trust, but not, um. The C P C or the private donors. Do, do you have that?
Um, well, we, it wasn't clear how much we could engage with you tonight. Um, we could certainly send that to you there. Um, you know, we have, there obviously, we have the C P A grant. Uh, we have our own capital. We have private donors. I, I don't have the fee right now, but I could certainly send that.
I mean, it was a requirement of the original application, so I feel like we've already kind of given you the prompt to correct it and where we are, where we are. Um.
Well, I mean, our purchase price is three hundred and forty thousand dollars. We have the C P A grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we have, uh, private capital, private donation of about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and we're looking to fund the purchase. Uh, some improvements as well as, uh, reserves for ongoing, uh, for, to maintain our ongoing ability to maintain rents, uh. Maintain the rents at a relatively low level or as low as possible. Um, so that's our general funding. And then I also forgot to mention, you know, we have the mortgage for eighty percent of the purchase price.
Are there any other committee members who would like to speak? So we're gonna move into the, uh, vote, but as is our policy, um. We allow any Great Barrington residents who have a comment. Um. To speak before we vote so that we don't hold public citizen vote to the end. So please make yourself known. Mr. Harwood, do you? Is Mr. Harwood a Great Barrington resident?
Um. Well, I don't know if you still have me on audio, but he's, he's not.
We have you, we have you now.
No, I'm, I'm with the C D C and you asked us for comments. I've been waiting.
I, I did, and I got an official representative who just gave us comment.
Well, I'm the president of the board. I'm also official representative. My comments brief, but if you don't wanna hear it, that's fine.
Go for it, go for it.
Um, it seems to me that the project you just funded in Husatonic was a twenty percent down payment assistance. Again, uh, with a, against two units for the term of the mortgage, if I remember correctly. And I think we're pretty much asking for the same thing.
Okay, is there any other comments from the public? Could you make yourselves known to me? Hearing, seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. The, um, motion on the table is to approve a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh. Source to be determined from, uh, for the C D C to purchase Thornwood, um. In exchange for ten deed restricted units at a hundred percent A M I. Um.
For fifteen years.
Well, that's not what the, that's, that's what they proposed. That was not what the motion was. Well, we can have a discussion about that if you'd like to alter the motion. Please.
We can have two votes or, or, yeah, uh, I, I moved to alter it to, what, fifteen years?
With ten. Fifteen years, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, this vote is to alter the original motion to fifteen years. It's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, ten units, hundred percent A M I, fifteen years. Any discussion? Hearing none.
It's fifteen or ten?
Fifteen. I believe you made the motion. I hope you know what it is.
I thought, I thought, uh, I thought Bill said ten, but I thought it was fifteen. So if.
You made the motion.
I know, but.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah, fifteen. All right, so fifteen.
All right, so this is a motion to alter the original, uh, and. All right, so this is a motion to alter the original. Uh, Ananda, you have a comment? Or not?
Not related to the altercation of the motion.
This is just for the altercation for this vote.
Sorry, it's not an altercation, it's an alteration.
Yeah, 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 it's a it's a modification.
I said it.
Yes. Bill votes yes. Uh, Ananda?
No.
No. Uh, Joseph?
Yes.
Joseph is yes. Christina?
Oh.
No. And I vote no, the motion fails. Back to the original motion, the original motion is ten units. Deed restricted uh for in at a hundred percent AMI. For perpetuity. In exchange for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant, source to be determined. Ananda, you have a comment on this motion?
Yeah, it just, um, I know that we're gonna. Look at this more closely later, but um. I have a concern that as we have. Currently. Thought through our funds, accounting for emergency rental assistance and et cetera through this fiscal year. That we don't actually have a hundred and seventy-five thousand that we haven't thought that is completely unencumbered for this.
Okay, does that mean that you want to?
I just want to make the committee members aware.
We don't have a, we don't have the money, is what you're saying, that's not in not completely unencumbered or not promised, at least. Um, because I don't, I think there's a difference there.
Um, I mean, if the in December, our December vote. Um, basically allocated a hundred and fifty-five thousand to the ADU pilot. And um. We have budgeted fifty thousand to the down payment loan program. And budgeted fifty thousand to the emergency rental assistance. And with those items budgeted. At that, we have closer, I mean, this is rough, but we have closer to a hundred and fifty thousand. Available. Um. To do a hundred and seventy-five would mean not. Spending money in one of those other areas. So I just adding the discussion.
And point out that our funding for next year is severely restricted. Uh, at this point, we can only expect twenty-three thousand dollars through the town meeting and CP. CPA. Um. We did write the the. RFP to be subject to available funding, so uh. You know. You, Ananda, you have a, you have an option. We can either alter the amount that we're providing for offering for a grant tonight. Or we could uh vote on the motion on the table.
I have a question, Fred.
Yes, please go ahead.
If they are saying the. The money will be for a fifteen-year timeframe. Why would we vote to make it permanent? I mean, because they're they're not offering that.
We're not off, well. The motion on the table is for permanent um AMI restriction. Because that's the kind of housing that that I think that we should be making, and I may, you know.
Yeah, but if they don't offer that, they don't propose that, then who are we voting for?
Well, we had the precedent before, you know, that they're they they make a proposal and then, you know, we can. Consider that proposal or we can um offer something that is a different. Proposal. We had the precedent uh in town here with the Mahawi block. Where they came in asking for a certain. Proposal. The CPC committee uh. Decided to change that proposal and offered to uh allow them to do that. And the developer then considered it, but ultimately declined. So CDC can ultimately consider our proposal, and if they find it too restrictive. They can either change the conditions or they can decline.
I understand.
Well, this is, I I move, we just vote.
Can we? Yeah, let's just move the question. So the question on the table is. Uh, ten units deed restricted, a hundred percent AMI in perpetuity for a grant of a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Bill Cook, how do you vote?
I'll vote yes.
Uh, Ananda, how do you vote?
No.
Uh, Joseph, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Abstain. Abstain. Okay. Uh, Christina, how do you vote?
Oh.
And I vote no. Motion fails. Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Um, moving on to the new business. Uh, we have a couple of things that we need to talk about. Um, the I I I do want to say before we move on from the Thornwood. Uh, good luck to the CDC. Uh, I know the project is. Going to be um well-received. Uh, I'm sure there's a need for it. I think Joseph said at our last meeting that all housing is fungible, and I I fully believe that. Um, that, you know, if you create units in one area, it does help the whole rest of the marketplace. Uh, because of supply. Um, and I and I do firmly believe that, and good luck to you. I do think that the that that is mostly workforce housing, it's mostly going to benefit the business community. And in my view, my personal view, is that the business community should be stepping up and supporting this in much more. Depth than they're doing now, instead of uh asking the public purse to uh provide as much money as they wanted. Good luck to him. All right. Um, new business. Uh, the grant that we provided for Front Street. And I've got a look around here on my. Screen. Is um. Has been moving through with the lawyers. And. I am going to share my screen. This document was sent to you. Um. And this is the legal document that uh provides the restriction on the. Front Street grant that the lawyers have worked out. And it had, it captures in legal terms, the terms that we agreed to, and it has been signed, as you can see on the screen now. By the Curletis. Uh, and um. The screen that's coming up now, if you can clearly, can everybody see that? Can anybody see that?
Yes.
Basically, we need to have a vote to accept. This, that the foregoing restriction and covenant is, you know, I motion that the foregoing restriction and covenant. Is accepted by the Town of Great Barrington Affordable Housing Trust Fund on sixteenth day of January twenty twenty-four. Uh, and that needs to be voted. So uh.
That motion.
Ananda makes the motion and second, please.
I'll second.
Bill Cook is a second. Uh, this motion is basically to accept the legal document. Uh, Bill Cook, please.
Yes.
Ananda, please.
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And Chair Fred Clark votes yes. The second part of this is. As you can see from the signature lines, each one of us have to individually sign this. Uh, because it's, Chris Rembold explained, because it's a land grant. It has to be signed by each member. This document will be at the selectman's office on the front table. If you could make your way to Town Hall sometime in the next week or so. Uh, and ask Josh there uh for the Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, folder, or if Chris Rembold is there, he will help you. And basically, um, you have to go there and sign it. If you can't, let me know and I'll bring it to your house or whatever I have to do to make it possible.
What's the timeframe? Because I'm very busy this week.
Well, when Town Hall is open.
No, I think she's asked, does it have to be done by?
I do not know when it has to be done by. Let me see, is.
As soon as possible, I would think.
Uh, as soon as possible would be the the recommendation. I was saying a week. Uh, if we can do it by sometime by the middle of next week, it would be good. Okay. Next night, I'm gonna stop the share. Um, actually go to the next one. And um. Down payment assistance application. Uh, here it is. No, that's the wrong thing, sorry. Uh, don't mean to make you crazy, but I've got to go back to uh here. Down payment assistance application, Zoom webinar. We have received a down payment assistance application. The uh. Person has gone through their training. They're purchasing a house. Uh, for two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and they've asked for a loan for for ten percent for twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. They have, they have been income qualified, they've submitted all the appropriate paperwork. Uh, that has been checked um for purposes of privacy, that's kept at Chris Rembold's file. Um. And I would like to um, hope we can do this. The funny part is that this is another Grove Street, but. In Great Barrington, it's not the same Grove Street that the Affordable Housing Trust, the uh. Habitat House is on. This is the Grove Street in Husatonic.
Exactly.
Why we have two, we have two park streets too, but you know.
We have two main streets too.
So this is, this isn't Husatonic, uh, this is a a nice little house and uh. Uh, this person is a a young person who's buying their first house and uh they are income qualified. So I think, and we have the funds available, budgeted for for this for this year. So um, can I have a motion to? Accept the down payment assistance application and loan for twenty-one thousand five hundred?
All right.
Uh, down payment assistant loan in the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars to Tyler Wade for. Two, three, two Grove Street and Husatonic.
I'll second.
Bill's second. Uh, any discussion, hearing none. Bill Cook, please.
Yes.
Uh, Ananda, please.
Yes.
Uh, Christina?
Yes.
And Joseph?
Yes.
And Fred Clark votes yes. Thank you, everybody. Um. That is one that I, the. Only I have to sign it. I don't know why it's different, that the chair signs that one and or the chair or the vice chair signs that one, the other one is a land grant, so. Um. The next item is uh a comments on the CPA. Committee and suggestions that they made along with uh a possible. Uh, activity report, and um. I'm gonna turn this over to Ananda because she's much more uh on tune with this, and would you like to? Give us a briefing about?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, um, so the CPC, so the the committee that oversees CPA funds um had. Strong concerns about our application. Um, and. Struggled to understand from the information provided. How funds previously awarded have been used to date. Um, this was exacerbated by. Having more than twelve meetings. From the last year without minutes posted or available. Um. So that's, that's all the bad news. Uh, the quality of our application can and should be stronger. Um. Our reporting can and should be stronger and our um. Record-keeping can and must be stronger and more timely, and as you've seen, Fred has put in a lot of work with Shep. To get that backlog moved through. Um. What else do I want to say about that? I want to say that despite the fact that. The trust is only at currently. Slated to receive twenty-three thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-five for in CPA funds. Um. The conversation among the committee was that as the exact amount of funds becomes clear. To distribute anything additional to what they estimated to have available. Um, they would like to look at allocating to the trust. And the other thing that I do think is a positive is that all taken together, the amount of funding. That CPC put proportionally towards affordable housing. Um, was very close to the amount of funding we were asking for in order to make sure it was put towards affordable housing. Uh, so that is a, that is a positive outcome for the town. Um, there's clear feedback that the trust is open, I mean, the CPC is open to a conversation. About um. Having the trust manage the C, the CPA funds for housing. Um, but to have that conversation, they need. To be, they need to be able to clearly see how we're managing the funding we have. And to be uh able to. See that both in reporting and in our application and in our minutes. So um, we've. Fred and I have taken some actions, as you can see, Fred has ta is put in a great deal of work with Shep on the minutes. Um, Chris has also been helping with that behind the scenes. I've put together a template, which you saw, and I have an updated version, I can screen share um for a way to. To more clearly um man. Manage and track our budget internally, as well as be able to report that out, and as soon as um. Fred, as soon as you let me know that I can.
I just made you a co-host. Again, or I can share the one that you gave me last time.
I have this one right here, so I can share it, and I'll walk you through this all in a second. The last thing is um. We've tentatively proposed a joint meeting, my recommendation and uh we'll have to be in touch with um. The leadership of the. The CPC is that we do this as a subcommittee rather than a full joint meeting, that that there be some joint meeting of. The trust and the CPC in April, at which point we will have completed the third quarter of the FY twenty-four fiscal year. And be able to provide updated reporting through this year at that point, and also um. Begin a conversation that is less about the application and more about like what would it, how would it actually work? For the CPC to award housing funds to CPA to disperse rather than do direct grants. Um, there's a lot of questions about that on the CPC side. Um, so just to walk you all through this briefly, this, what this would do is this first tab. Um, I use the October budget we discussed as a committee. To um fill in this budgeted amount column. Actuals show funding in and dispersment uh dispersments or commitments, or. As Fred has called them, encumbered funds by quarter. Um, and then projected would be updated at the end of each quarter to become. Um, and then projected would be updated at the end of each quarter to become actual. So right now, um, this projected. Reflects the um, ADU. Vote and um, an actual invoice for construct emergency assistance. Um. And based on tonight's vote, I can add. The second down payment loan. And so then we can see in real time how. Um, how that affects what funding we have to still allocate or use throughout the fiscal year.
Should have given them the extra five hundred.
Um, I think it was tied to a specific percentage they needed of the purchase price.
I don't know what we're gonna do with the five hundred.
Well, we'll, we'll do something with it. Um, the second tab, this is provided by Chris Rembold. So this is where Chris is accounting for all funds received. Uh, you could think of it as a bank statement. And this um, all avail, this balance available, all funds. This is a December statement, matches. The December end of second quarter balance on the first tab.
Yeah, the committee, excuse me, the committee should have seen this report from Chris. We've had a couple of different versions of this. Over the years, we've actually been sharing this with. The CPA and this has been more of the report that we've been giving them. We thought, or I, let's make that personal. I thought this was uh, what they were looking for and this uh, but apparently they weren't happy with this.
And then um, accompanying that is a. Short narrative for each quarter. This is still in draft form. Um. But basically is a word, a sentence version of what the two tabs show. The first two tabs show. So that's, that's the funding side of what I'd like to propose we adopt as a way to. Track internally and report out. Um, what funding decisions look like. That is then also backed up by the minutes. Additionally to that, I think a missing piece is having a narrative report on the outcomes of the projects and grants. Um, and initiatives that we fund. And I've talked very briefly with Bill about this. He thinks that this would be great to be on our website. Correct, Bill? Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, um, I thought perhaps just update the website quarterly.
Um, I think updating the website quarterly is great and I, and would easily lend itself. To taking that text and putting it into a single document when we're, when we um, need to provide any funder with. A full picture of what the trust has done and is doing. Um, so. My, like, my, the action items here for this section for me are one that us as a body adopting. Um, adopting the. Funding report I just shared and um. Working toward, like, using the months between now and the end of March to put together that narrative report so that at the start of April, we could share out. Both with CPC.
Um, Amanda, can you tell us? Uh, in our applications, how do we argue that we would be a better recipient? Than giving it to?
Yeah. I'm, so. I think, and Bill and I talked about this in broad strokes on the podcast some, and so I think it's most useful to kind of keep it. Item, at a higher level discussion than just what our argument is in an application, because I think it's a decision. It's a, a decision for the town and that it's a decision that will be made by the CPC on, on behalf of the town. But there's two, there's two models. Um. There are towns that where their CPC takes them funding that they are, would allocate towards affordable housing and they pass that through to the trust. And then there are towns like how Great Barrington currently works where the trust applies for a specific project. Um, I think the argument for considering. Something different than what we're currently doing is that um, the trust has. Special purchasing powers that the rest of the town doesn't have in that we can move quickly to purchase a property in a way that is not. Um, how purchase processes normally go for a municipality. Um, so that's an important tool and that's tied specifically to CPA funds right now. Um. Bill, I understand you're talking with Smitty about changing that, but for right now, the only way the CPC can. Uh, the only way the trust can move quickly on a purchase is if we're using CPA funds. And then I think the second, the second um. Benefit is you can have a body. In the, in the town that is meeting on a monthly basis and that is essentially specializing in affordable housing and assessing. Um, projects, whether that's assessing uh, grants. To developers or assessing a, a purchase or assessing the value of providing emergency assistance. And that goes hand in hand with then the funding is not, is available on a twelve-month basis. To be utilized instead of one time a year. And that's particularly important in the realm of real estate because as it's currently structured, if the trust wants to access CPA. Funds in order to do, to purchase land or uh, um. A structure to use for housing. We essentially have to forecast eighteen months minimum in advance that we wanna make that purchase. And so that really kind of. It limits what we can do. That's not the pace at which real estate moves and it also kind of undermines the potential for the special link between CPA. Funds and um, being able to use them quickly in your community by having a trust. Um, so I think that's the core argument and the CPC uh, is in some, some part saying. Okay, we hear that argument, but to even have that discussion, we need to see that this. Body that's meeting monthly has really strong governance and is showing that level of expertise.
And what about our uh, variety of, of funding? Like that we have ADU and ADU and we have the uh, the uh, tiny houses and we have. All different projects that we could, and other places don't have that.
Yeah, I think, yes, if we're talking about the, the specific application and also I think. I think that our thinking um, as a body. Importantly reflects the full scope of experience of. People who live in Great Barrington around housing. We have, we are starting with rental assistance which. Keeps people in housing, which is really critical at a point where there isn't extra housing available. Um, it looks at how to move people, support people to move into purchasing a home and keeping those purchases. Affordable. Um, the ADU looks at how to help people who own homes stay in their homes and provide additional housing. And the grants, the grants are up for the, kind of the next level of development, how to create more housing and as are the acquisitions. Um, and I, you know, I think that the solutions that we're pursuing as a body. Are specific to our understanding of this community, right? Like a different town might need a different set of solutions. Uh. But yes, I do think that, I do think that. Um. The way we're working is more able to have an impact than if we are only going to CPC. Asking for a single project to develop in eighteen months.
So um, I wanna see if we can zero in here, because I think some of this has to do with uh. What we wanna do in the future and then there's the other parts that are more immediate and right in front of us. Right now. Um. Uh, regarding the report. I think that for me, one of the critical times is the beginning of the fiscal year. I think we should do something different. At the end of the year to sort of summarize that year uh, and. Work. Because it's a time that the, the funding becomes refreshed. Um, I uh, would also share with you the same comments that I made with you when you, when you showed me a draft of this. Uh, I think that the entries should go in when they're voted on, not when they're expended. Because that's when the funds are restricted, encumbered, if you will. Um. Such as the uh, so that they're not available to be put on the next quarter. The example would be the ADU. Uh, pilot project was voted on in the second quarter. And should be there in the second quarter. I also think that the narrative needs to be a little, little bit more punchy, a little bit more, less verbose. So, anyway.
Um, Chris, I see that you are on, as an attendee. Um.
I just made him a panelist.
Okay, I have a.
If he wants to be.
Yeah, so like I'm, I see, and I guess I should share my screen again. Um.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great.
Um, on the December seventh report that you provided us. Um. So this, in this case, the December seventh would predates the day that we had the vote on the ADU. Would you then, on your report at, if, were this report run at the end of December, would it show the ADU? As encumbered on your report?
Yes, that's what I would do. Once the trust takes a vote on something, I would encumber it at least in here, if not. Formally with a purchase order in the system.
Okay, and so then my other question is the rental assistance that you have under. Um, FY twenty-three for construct.
Mm-hmm. We haven't spent that yet, so that's an error on your report that we, I, I can help you with that. We can figure that out.
I'm getting at is, like, I would, I, what I do think we need to do is that um. The actuals by quarter should reflect, should mirror Chris's. Report at the end of the quarter, at, you know, at the end of the quarter. And so that's. I think that alignment is what matters. Um, but my, like, the question I have about, like, emergency assistance. Is the way that actually is. Whether the way it's dispersed or the way that it's encumbered shows up on the report, because that was not clear to me looking at it.
Yeah, the question is, uh, for me is, was that money already dispersed to uh? The, uh, to uh, construct? Because when I talked to them, they said they don't have any funding for the emergency rental assistance. So, did we give them the money or no?
We did. We voted uh, fifty thousand dollars.
They, they received the, the funds if they invoice for it and provide a.
Yeah. It, it's a, they pay, they, they spend them first and then they ask for reimbursement.
Correct.
So the money that they're talking about, the fourteen thousand or fifteen thousand dollars. Is against an account that they have that was actually based on fiscal uh, twenty-three funds. In other words, we voted the fifty thousand, we voted for last April or wherever it was.
Yes, you see what I'm showing you here, Fred, is that on um, the December report, fifty thousand is not shown as.
You need to go up to the other line here. What we did.
Yeah.
I worked, I worked with Chris to try to close out some old funds that were unfortunate. If you look at fiscal year eighteen, there's also six thousand one hundred and forty-five. That was on that same vote. The vote was for fifty thousand dollars. But the funding source was from fiscal eighteen, fiscal twenty, and then the remainder was from fiscal twenty-three.
So CPA, we're just trying to use old funds.
One of the things that CPA didn't like last year was that we had these small amounts. Left over from fiscal eighteen and nineteen and twenty. And they wanted us to close those out. So when we spent the money, I asked Chris to source it. And close out those funds. So that we were zeroing out old money. We can work on this together.
Yeah. So it's those three green lines.
Yes.
Okay.
Made one fifty thousand dollar account, which they can bill against. They have submitted one bill against it now for about fifteen thousand dollars. So that's where that thirty-five comes from, not from a new grant that we would make in fiscal twenty-four.
So it sounds like the special thing is, is CPA funds. Um, where they tied them to specific uses.
That's right. If, if CPA ties it, if town meeting ties it to specific uses, that's why we track it, so. Particularly in this type of spreadsheet.
Like the twenty-three thousand that's coming in, that doesn't have a specific use, right?
Correct. Any CPA eligible.
Oh, I mean, yeah, so it's, it's kind of like an old problem. So I think I understand the issue. So it sounds like when we vote for something. We are saying the money's spent, because it's going into an account to be spent.
Yes, correct.
Fred would, yeah, Fred would like the um. At the, he'd like the. Actual to occur in the quarter the vote happened, so then. It really, like. I guess. My question would be then for emergency rental assistance, that the vote occurred in the previous fiscal year and we're tracking funds in this fiscal year. Um, do we show it as uh, encumbered in the first quarter actuals? So that we can um, show, so we can match the balance.
We can work on this. Um, the reason that the fifty thousand for emergency rental assistance was on the budget was. We, or I anticipated that the previous vote would be completely used up. And that they would come back and look for a refresher of more money. They had done that in the past. They are doing it, they are spending the money much less rapidly than they did originally.
Right, which leaves us with a second question. Um, which is about the reporting we need from constructs, which you and I have spoken about, Fred.
We do and I don't think we can get into it.
I don't wanna get into it deeply, but the reason I wanna raise it is that Christina is saying that. When she called to ask about emergency rental assistance fund availability in Great Barrington. She was told at this point there are no funds available and based on what we've been invoiced for to date, which would show up in the construct. Report and does show in the construct report, they should have funds to disperse.
Yes, they should have at least thirty-five thousand dollars for Great Barrington.
So in, if that's not the case, we need to go back to construct to revise how they're reporting to us and.
Well, that, that whole program needs an overhaul. Uh, we need to be clear about how the program operates. How the reporting gets done, how the billing gets done. Uh, how the invoicing gets done and I'm not so sure that. We have any more than a handshake to go on, on, on all of that kind of stuff and we need to really overhaul it.
We asked them next week, uh, next month.
Like to get the report we need be, so that like we, if, when, if we're asking. I think, let's start with a report and then whether or not we need somebody to come and talk us through it.
Yeah, so, so, but, but can we just ask them for a report?
Yeah.
Well, we wanna, we.
It is.
They've said, what do you wanna see? And so I think it's partially on us and I, I will do a draft of. What I would like to see and uh, maybe Ananda could contribute, because I know she has some. Had some discussions as well about it. So. Anyway, can we um, agree that this summary report in draft? report in draft form is a good reporting tool that we'd like to go forward with it? And keep it up to date, that it will be useful for us to see where the money is. And it'll be useful to share with those people who are concerned, the CPC and others there. Can, do we want to have a vote on this? I guess we do.
I don't think it's
Ananda, do you think we should vote on this?
It's probably faster to do it and get it done than discuss whether or not to do it. So.
All right. The motion is to accept this tool as a what do you want to call it? Periodic summary.
I, I, I have a fancy word. So in programming, we could say source of truth. So, so it's gonna be our, our source of truth.
Chris's puts a lot of pressure on you and me.
Yeah, I don't know what the hell that means.
I really don't know what that means.
I make a motion that we adopt the reporting, the budgeting and reporting tool for the trust's internal budgeting and reporting out to the CPC.
Bill seconded, Bill vote?
Yes.
Ananda?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you. We'll continue to work on this tool, but, and, and we'll share with it, share with you. What do you think? Quarterly? Periodically?
I think that for our internal purposes, we should provide it with each meeting packet since we right, we might be making decisions based on about money and it would be helpful for us to have that available. Chris, is it possible to do the, the worksheet that you do at the end of each month?
That should be fun.
Okay. I will update it monthly and provide, and provide it in advance of meetings for you, Fred.
Okay. And, and we'll continue the discussion on talking to the CPA. I want to move on because I know that some, I know that some of us have to leave. I, I, we did schedule an executive session at the end of this. We had put on the agenda ADU pilot next steps.
Bill and I discussed this briefly. I will take on that basically the next steps is us to be, is to move towards making this public and the application live and open. And for that to happen, Chris, I need to connect with you to answer the final questions we had for council and set up whatever we need for a con, a contract. And I will also talk with Jane at construct and close the loop on that discussion. We, the trust in our, in our plan, the trust assigned itself basic PR materials that's listed in the proposal includes a press release, a short description for the website and for use in other social media, et cetera. And providing the press release to the, to Ellen Law at the town to go out to the various venues that are listed. So I'd like to propose that Bill and Joe form a subcommittee to work on that.
Okay.
Uh, motion, motion to do that?
With your permission, I make a motion that Bill and Joe form a subcommittee to create the marketing materials for the ADU pilot.
Seconded.
It has to be a roll call vote. So Bill?
Yes.
Ananda?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Uh, Joseph?
Yes.
And Fred votes yes. So thank you for that. Moving on, we have on the agenda a discussion related to public participation.
It's okay if I leave that.
We can pass it if you like.
I, I, I put
Yes, Joseph, if we'd like to say something.
Yeah, so first I wanted to apologize for getting upset at the last meeting, at the end of the meeting. I just, I lost my temper. And I think the main, the main principle is just that we had invited somebody. And so when you invite somebody, then you should be respectful to them. So that's that person was upsetting me. But, but that is still you, you shouldn't be rude, be rude to guests, basically. So anyways, I wanted to apologize about that. And then the, the conversation just is that we've had this sort of informal policy about allowing some people to talk and sort of the the chair's discretion. And I wanted to propose that in the future, we basically have some sort of conversation about like, just, just, I don't know if it's a vote or just a verbal discussion, like, should we, should we allow someone to talk? It seems like, I would say in general, it seems more appropriate for somebody to be invited to talk during like something on the agenda rather than it's during citizen speak. And then I was going to suggest that that when we're allowing somebody not from the town to speak, that we, that we clearly identify their role. Including, we say if they're a lobbyist or not.
So a couple of things. We have some control and some things we don't have control over. We are a public body and we do value input. And citizens of the town of Great Barrington are I, I want to say entitled to approach us and make their views known. The way that that's done is either through citizen speak at the end of the agenda. Or where someone can speak on anything, by the way, which often will be, it's not supposed to be a dialogue and we'll put it on a future agenda to discuss. In addition to that, we do ask people if we're having an important vote to do their comment. There was a lot of pushback, not on this committee, but in town that people weren't allowed to speak on valuable things before, for instance, the select board was voting on it. So the policy has been to before there's an important vote to ask if there's any brief comments and those comments should be no longer than three minutes. They should be respectful. They shouldn't repeat what's been said before and they should be on topic. In addition, out of towners are allowed to vote at the, allowed to speak at the discretion of the chair. It's, you know, because we're such a small group, we've basically allowed almost anybody who has input and is, is respectful and is on point to, to make a comment. So those are the kinds of policies that we're working within. So I, I appreciate your comments, but those are the kinds of things that we're tied to. Ananda, did you want to address this?
Yes, thank you. I, I think the one thing I'd like to pull out of what you said, Joe, is that I'd like, I would like us to adopt a practice as a board that if we are seeking out the specific consultation or inviting an outside representative of an organization or individual to be engaged in a process with the trust that is different than what happens in citizen speak or in the process we've set up for comment prior to vote. I would like that to be a clear discussion and vote by the committee. I think that will help that will help our process moving forward.
Sorry, I didn't understand. So say we have a, a vote to to vote on, I mean, a project to vote on and what's the distinction that you have from the consultation? How are we going to be accessing the organization?
Yeah, in this case, I think that the tiny house projects representative, Amy Turnbull, her role was not clear. And it was not a vote of the committee to ask her to be a consultant on the ADU project. However, she was, she was left because individual committee members' actions. She was left with the experience of being asked to give her time and consult with us as a body. And even invited to a sub, into, to subcommittee, which she could not be a member of. And so that's like, if, let's say that we wanted to let's say that we wanted to better understand the issue of construction costs. As part of doing that moving forward, we're like, let's consult a few different companies that are really in the thick of this and are also trying to think a little bit about like how on earth you could make something affordable. I would want that to be more than we just invited them to a meeting, but that we, as a body, discuss, we're going to do this, we're going to bring in outside entities. We're going to ask them to provide information to the committee and here's their role in the process.
Yep, lessons learned.
Here's where it ends.
Good.
Okay, thank you for that.
Well, it's so, I know we're wrapping up.
We're not wrapping up. That's the point. I want to get to the other.
Whoa. Okay. Well, I'm going to drop off at eight, but but I, I would just urge the chair to basically have like extremely high bar for specifically for citizen speak for out of towners. So I don't
Noted. Also on the calendar, on the agenda is a meeting calendar and projected topics. I'm going to suggest that we pass over that. We have a executive session that I'd like to get through. It will be very brief. Joe, I think you can still attend in time.
And then for citizen speak?
We're going to go through trustee speak, citizen speak. If anybody has a comment now in the regular meeting, please let your known. I see none. Media speak, any media speak? Eileen, nothing? So Eileen has a comment.
I have a question. Is the Hold on a second. I have to make sure I'm talking about the right thing. Really, sorry. The RFP proposal review, the ADU pilot, that's what I mean. Do you have a finished copy of that? I know you're talking about the marketing, but do you have a finished copy already?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that included in the December packet?
It will be posted with the minutes. So yes, Eileen, the answer is yes. And we will make sure you get a copy.
Okay. Thank you. Bye.
So in order to go into executive session, and I promise you, it will be no more than five or 10 minutes. We need to have a roll call vote that closes the open session. We are going to convene into opens in the executive session, not to return into open session. So I need, and please stay on Zoom for committee members. And what I would like is a motion to close the regular meeting now.
I make a motion. Yes, I second.
Second. Roll call, Bill?
Hi.
Ananda?
Fred? Fred? This is Chris. You just hold on a sec. Did you actually read all the purposes for the executive session and make?
I did not. I did not. Because I was going to do that afterwards. The motion is to convene into exec, well, first we have to close the meeting, don't we, Chris?
No.
Okay.
The, the process of going into executive session closes the regular session. But in order to go into executive, you need to clearly state it, then clearly state that you will not return to open.
Yeah. In order to go into an executive session, the purpose, the, to convene into executive session and not to return to open session, executive session under Mass General Laws, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A, for the following purpose, purpose six, to discuss the strategy with respect to a possible real estate acquisition. And then can we close or should I do the motion now, Chris?
You don't actually close the open session. I mean, it's not like you would. I mean, I guess you can technically adjourn from open session.
Executive session, according to the town clerk.
And then, and then into executive session. Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
So we have a motion on the table to adjourn from regular session and to then reconvene in executive session, not to return into open session. Motion, we move that the Affordable Housing Trust will meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A, with the following purpose, to discuss the strategy with respect to a possible real estate acquisition because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation of the Affordable Housing Trust. There is a roll call vote. Bill Cook?
Yes.
Ananda?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And Fred Clark?